President.
President.
Of the United States of America. In terms of what stands. One nation under one individual liberty and justice.
Squire.
So first off, we have our student council of the A's act, so. They can come up first. Start us off with some data on what's going on.
Hi, everybody. I'm Joan Langstein. I advise the high school student council. And to me, I have with me my president, Jeanne Gouli, and my president, Mason Bratt. They accompanied me last month to the Capital National Youth Summit. And we found a presenter there. She was a keynote speaker. Who meant that's one of the goals that student councils set for themselves this year, which was to focus on the mental health needs of our high school students. So I'm very excited to tell you that she's going to be on campus on April 28. She's three. And she puts on a phenomenal program not only for the vast majority of the students, but her niche is a bit into these student athlete population. And Mason and Jean will tell you why that is. So she will be here for a big assembly, breakout sessions during lunches, and then has agreed to stay on campus to do a community forum for parents and the community. So that's why we're here today is because not only do they want to show you what the program is about, but they would love your help to get the word out to the community that the event's happening. Okay, so we'll turn it over to them. They can practice.
Okay, so our target is first stress, success, and teenage step fast. And a lot of it is induced by mental health and in some cases substance abuse problems. So we're bringing Stephanie and Mike Somer from the Harris Project on April 28.
Okay, this is Harris. This is Stephanie's son. He tragically passed away due to an accidental overdose when he was 19 years old. And it really just got Stephanie into looking into his mental health and how if the substance abuse that he was having was affecting that and working together. So she really advocates for co-occurring disorder awareness, which we will talk about what that is. But it's the main thing about what happened with Harris. So she really wants to spread the news.
So COTD is our Mid-Worlds Teens with Mental Health and Substance Abuse Problems. And COD stands for Co-Occurring Disorders, which are people who have mental health problems like anxiety, depression, bipolar, and PTSD, along with substance abuse problems with alcohol, medication, or other drugs.
So over 10.2 million people have co-occurring disorders and most people have never even heard of it. There's three categories that usually fall into. Those who have a mental health disorder or multiple who misuse substances and a misguided attempt to manage or self-medicate. There's also those who misuse substances and experience negative impacts, which causes them to have mental illnesses or mental disorders. And then those who are predisposed to both mental health and substance abuse and kind of work with them together.
So about 22% of teens ranging from 13 to 18 are diagnosed or can be diagnosed with mental health disorders and/or addictive disorders. About 50% of all mental health illness cases begin at 14 and 75% begin at age 24. About 70% of misuse substances are people who have co-occurring disorders.
So on Thursday, April 28, Stephanie will come in. And she's going to share her story about Harris and what she does with the students. And they're going to learn what they can say to their friends or their parents or where to start and get help for themselves. Because a lot of this like issue isn't really talked about together. Because at school, we have a section where you can talk to someone about your mental health. And then another person you can talk to about substance abuse. They don't really ever talk and meet. So those kind of get ignored together when they really work together. And then later on in the day, we're going to have the parents and the community members come out to see how she can help them really work with their their children and their children's friends, you know, just overall, like, to learn what they can do to help.
So we're going to start with an assembly during Block Two for all high school students. And then we'll go into Block Three with more, and she'll give more information and resources. And then she'll do some giveaways and try to get people to come to the breakout sessions. And during the breakout sessions, which I believe are during office hours, students can come in, any students can come in and do these these activities. And they mainly focus on student athletes because those tend to be the people who have a lot of stress and need to manage things in order to not feel overpowered and trying to do things like substances. And then at 6:30, we're going back and talk to the parents and the community. And they'll learn how to recognize and address co-occurring disorders.
And then these are just some of the flyers that she has and like to kind of get the word out while also kind of keeping people interested because you try to get them to actually pay attention because this is really important and a lot of people will talk about it. Like, her son, Harris, he was a student athlete. He was very popular. Like, he knew so many people. Yet, not, a lot of people just didn't know how hard he was struggling behind closed doors. Like, even his own mother, sadly, which I know must really not be fun for her, but now she's trying to help as many people as she can. There's some more.
This is two parts of those, but we'll, we'll be printing some out and changing them throughout the school to get people. Not, I don't know, get them excited, but maybe. So, and those could maybe be put out to the community and get them interested too.
If there's any questions, we're open to it. I don't know if we'll have the best answers, but we'll try.
I have a question. How did you guys get into this and hear about her?
Um, we went to the annual youth summit up in Albany with like a few of our student council members. And she was one of the main speakers. And she also had a table out there, but we were really drawn to her. Because like the second I heard it, I was like, oh, this should be a speaker we should have. And we all like instantly agreed.
It definitely targets like us. And the way she speaks is also like it captures you and you don't really get bored. And I feel like she doesn't, she also doesn't talk in circles. Like, she has a lot to say. And it's not much repetition. There's always something you're doing.
Oh, great.
Do you think you'll have an interest in this for yourself and like in life and your careers?
Oh, sure, sure. It's definitely something that I have, I've never thought about. Because like personally, I do like me- mental health disorders, like I have ADHD and anxiety. And I never thought like how bad it would be if I mixed substances into that. And the fact that someone else has and sadly lost their life, like, it's really important that I think we get it out to people before they start, you know, accidentally like making mistakes that cost them their life.
This, well, this speaker or a few other speakers that were there, it was kind of inspiring, but also made you aware for a lot of things you might not think about, especially now that we're going to college. Like, we need to be informed about these things and spread the information to other people that might not be informed about them.
Well, I applaud you for bringing this topic to our school and community. This is great. Have you given some thought after April 28th? How you would keep the messaging going on April 28th?
Yeah, we actually talked to Stephanie today over Zoom and she is about to go with the program SAD. I don't know, do you remember what it's called?
I think they're destructive. Distracted.
Yeah. I would have thought that was. But she's about to go natural with this. And she wants to make little programs of like getting students involved to be like your educators. So we talked to her and maybe it would be a thing that we could get like a club going or something like that.
Or if we just make it like an annual presentation for like ones we leave. If other kids, other kids aren't always involved with things like the youth summit. So maybe if like other upcoming student council members might be interested after they see it this year. And it could just go into.
I'm thinking maybe you can narrow down those students who would be interested and could carry the torch.
Yeah.
Because you guys want to go into college.
We definitely have like a few people that are just always around and really interested in the things that we're learning. And get very involved in everything and want to keep keep awareness on things like this and also new things that we might not think about.
Again, congratulations on your good work.
Thank you, definitely.
I have another question, comment. You were saying that the two counselors don't speak, right? A student will see them for their mental health and then even their substance abuse. Are you hoping to bridge that gap, have the counselors start speaking to each other? And would you like that to happen?
Absolutely. I mean, I think that if it's in our, like bring it to our school will show, like will maybe inspire our own counselors. And then the fact that it's going nationwide might inspire other counselors in other schools or not even schools, like other companies and stuff.
Yeah, because the big thing that she talked about was how people don't really know about co-occurring, co-occurring disorders. So that like branching never like met. So she really is looking forward to that because like her son like went through it, like he went to both and they just never talked to each other. So it just didn't work out.
And also the parents, like them as parents could talk to their coun- like talk to their kids' counselors and say, I think that these are going hand in hand, but they didn't know that. So I think that giving that information to like the parents in the community, that they might, like if they recognize it or learn how to recognize it, they'll know how to address it.
It's a good goal. I think New York State has that goal. Because there's two entities that coexist. You deal with each, how they come together is trick. Is this what you're saying?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I'm glad they sent that light for us.
Yes.
Introduce Mr. Daggett, Bill Daggett, who is here to present. As you know, we've had a lot of conversations about our 2030 destination and the landmarks such to get there. A lot of that is tied to some of the work that Bill's been doing forever, you know, in many roles. Superintendent, we're going to stay there two years, et cetera. He's been working with us for the last several months as well. Get ourselves focused. In front of you have a timeline and some of those topics kind of connect to some of the things that he's going to talk about. Focus particularly on just making sure that we're always thinking about how we are, we will be trying to help kids be ready for their future.
Randy, good evening, Dr. One.
Hello.
Let me begin by thanking you for being on the school board. I know the enormous pay you get and all the recognition and, you know, makes it worthwhile. My wife was on the school board for 32 years and they're close to that norm. You've got two years to go. I'm going to share some information. You got, hold my, okay, great. The information I'm going to share relates to an initiative that your district has now become a part of with 121 other school districts across the country. And it came out of, let's see, what? It came out of a national commission. Back in August 2020, I want you to think about that time frame for me. That was a few months into the pandemic. And in the spring of 2020, everybody thought that the pandemic and its impact on schools would be over by the fall. That didn't quite happen. And so the National Governments Association, the National School Boards Association, the Council of Chief State School Officers, that's the state commissioners across the country, and AASA, which is the American Association of School Superintendents, came together and said, we need to bring some thought leadership for school districts because it appears that this pandemic will be with us until at least next spring. And there were even a lot on that, obviously. So they brought together a national commission, seven, 27 people. And they picked 12 of the nation's most respected thought leaders who were school superintendents. Latice Cruz was one of those 12. Then they brought together the heads of the five largest tech companies in the country. The heads of the five largest educational foundations and a series of other thought leaders. I had the privilege of co-chairing that national commission. We met every other week for eight months. Looking deep at not simply the pandemic, but what else was happening during that same period of time. But because we were so consumed by the pandemic, schools did not have their eye on us. For example, and leading the way was what these young ladies just talked about. An absolute explosion in mental health issues in this country. The second area was the fact that technology was about to take off. And fundamentally changed the American workplace, home, and society. The fact that the projection was that post-pandemic, 35% of all American workers would work from home permanently. And of the remaining 65%, 50% of them would spend at least a third of their time working from home remotely. 42% of all paid working hours in the country, people would be working from home. All kinds of implications to any one of these trends. So the commission came together. And for some reason, the clickers aren't going well. They made a series of recommendations, but what we quickly learned was if any of you are around long enough that ever hear of the nation at risk, a major report in the late 1980s about American education, then no child left behind. That national commissions in the past, they basically set on the shelf. And that if you really wanted to implement something, you had to get it deep into schools. And so we picked initially 50 schools and then extended it to 121. Randy, that's where you came in. And it was a cross-section of urban, suburban, and rural school districts. Cut across the country, represented in some every state in the country. To try to take the recommendations of the commission and provide support to those schools to implement those recommendations that that community was most comfortable with. Because you cannot move faster than the rate of readiness and trust. And today, the American education system has become a political lightning rod, as you all must know. And from the left to the right, enormous battles. What you can't do is get too far in front of your community and your staff. Or you'll get derailed. And so one of the things we try to do is figure out very quickly with the school district, where are you? Was your community ready to begin to tackle? Now, Randy, I only know enough to be, this much to be dangerous about these two young ladies that were just here. But here's my hunch is what they said and your questions. This community recognizes there's a growing mental health issue. By way of example, that's a readiness issue. But is there a trust issue by all the parents? That they want you dealing with their kids' mental health issues? And so that's what I say readiness and trust upfront. I say that because I'm going to show you some of the recommendations. I don't know that you're ready for all the recommendations. You've got to pick and choose that which you think this community, this staff is ready for. Three central cultural things we identified. Number one, that American schools, and I'm going to stand over here because it's getting interference from the speaker with my clicker. That American schools need to focus on the whole learner. By the way, we use the word learner, not student. Only because student kind of depicts a passive, traditional role. And today's kids need to be much more actively engaged in the learning process if you're going to motivate them. But our responsibility in American education is first and foremost academics. But most communities are beginning to recognize schools are responsible for a lot more than just academics, like mental health. That's the whole trajectory. The other thing we began to recognize is that we've become polarized by all of these things about equity and diversity. We made the decision not to get deep into that debate. We simply said that no child shall be marginalized because of their disability. Now, if you think about it, we've come a long ways since 94, 145, 142, which is the special ed legislation. From the 1960s to today, the services for the disabled is dramatically better. We've come a lot further in sex education with the opportunities for women and young ladies than we had in the 60s and 70s. So no child should be marginalized because of disability or their sex or their race or their religion or their socioeconomic status. Another recommendation is the one I want to talk about with you tonight, which is schools need to be more future-oriented. We're preparing students for their future, not our past. And as we began to do that, we, we looked deeply at some issues. How many of you in the room, including maybe around the side, how many of you got a driver's license within one month? Or you got at least your permit, okay, maybe not your license, but permit or license within one month of turning legal age to get your license? Hands up, let's see. Okay. See, these kids are an extension of this technology. But look at that data. They're not getting their driver's licenses nearly as often. Some of you have your own kids with this situation? Okay, does that change their behavior and interaction in a lot of ways? Now, the next thing is a good thing that it changed, but it changed. How many of you had a friend in high school who drank adult alcoholic beverages out with another friend before they graduated from high school? Now, I know you didn't. But in today's world, that's a good change. How many of you had at least one part-time job before you graduated from high school? How many of you had at least one date before you graduated from high school? Today's kids are different. They're different. But what else is different is the world are about to change. And it's being pushed by a number of issues, but I want to focus on the one on technology with you tonight. Let's look at a recap for a minute. This is the largest warehouse for Google in the country. It's a quarter of a mile long. Those little carts you see in the middle? The robots. And what happens is the tractor trailer, our train holds up to the loading dock. The robots go onto the train, onto the tractor trailer, pulls off the merchandise, puts it on your shelf, you ordered something, another robot goes, gets it, grabs it, puts a label on, and out the door. Now, why do I show it to the largest warehouse in the country? 92% of all workers in that company are now technology workers in that warehouse. There's hardly any physical labor left. But it's not just low-end jobs. Look at finance and banking. This past year, two-thirds of all stock trades were driven by an algorithm, not by a person making a decision. By next year, that figure is now projected to be 98%. Randy, I could go for the next two hours with changes in the American workplace. I'm not going to do that. I just want to give you a snapshot. Because I want to show you what is about to come over us. And our tech guy over here probably knows more about it than anybody else in the room because as soon as he saw my PowerPoint, he quizzed me. It's called GPT. GPT. And you all aren't experiencing it and don't even recognize it. It's different. It has three levels. Level GPT1. If I, and if you go to type an email and you type the first two or three letters of the person's email address that you're trying to contact, what happens?
Comes right up.
Comes, comes right up. And you might have to pick because it'll be four or five, but it comes up. Okay, that was, that was GPT1. I can give you other examples of it. But we all experienced that. Let me take you to GPT2. Then you notice that you're going to write an email and you write the first three or four words. What happens? Yeah, do you know that the words it will give me are not the same they will give you? Yeah, it's based upon a pattern. It's by, based upon the phraseology I use. You know that if I almost always misspell a word, it will actually misspell the word too. Okay? It's based upon what I do. That's GPT2, a little bit more powerful than the contactless. Another example is Amazon. Any of you been surprised about, you order something and then what's happening?
Gives you lots of other suggestions that you can shop for.
And it's not the same for any of us. Dutch GPT. How many have ever used GPS while driving? Now, let me tell you, if you come from Niskiun in New York, which is where I came from tonight, to Kuk Saki, and you put in, is it 24? Yeah. 24, what's the name of the street? What's that? Sunset. I, I made the mistake of putting in 24 Sunset. And it took me to 24 Sunset Court. Does anybody know where that is in your town? Yeah. It's in the middle of nowhere. Okay. But G, GPE, GPS, you all use it. I don't think we have thought about the impact that that technology is having on brain development. I co-authored a book five years ago with a leading neuro researcher. Around what this technology was doing because it's changing many things, which we'll talk about in a moment. GPT3. And I'm not a betting man normally, but I'll bet anybody in this room that wants to bet me. And I will give you 10 to 1 odds in your favor. 90% of your kids will be using this by the next school year. Because it is over 100 times more powerful than GPT2. So now you go to type and the three, first, you put a subject matter in, in an email. And you type the first three or four words. It doesn't give you the next three or four words. Gives you the entire email.
Takes time.
Yeah. With your phraseology. If you know anything about writing levels, with your Lexile writing level, it looks just like yours. The commission had a look and we took 10 different people and asked them to start using this technology. And not one of them, and not one person could tell the difference between the GPT-generated email and the actual email written by the person. It's that good. Now, why that, is that an issue? Want to give a kid a writing assignment? Yeah.
Yeah.
You want to ask them to write a shirt, sir? You want to ask, write three paragraphs? All they got to do is put in the title. It will write the entire paper for them. Now, why is that a big issue? I used to run the regions.
Yeah.
Do you understand the implications here for the regions or your local testing? These are huge changes. You can write the email or the report. What's that literacy? What has spell check done to your ability to spell?
Lazy speller.
Lazy speller. And these kids will never have experienced any system other than that. Huge implications. Let me take a, what's it do to brain development? If they're not going to be able, have to write longer pieces. You know, with the hippocampus is in the, in the brain, which is a key skill that's up. A key skill that's a part of the brain, the schools develop. There are huge implications. And this is not something the board can resolve. Is that staff over there? Yeah, they're going to have to resolve it. Okay? And with the teachers. These are tough tough issues. And the problem is, it's gonna, it's gonna have people have different reactions in your community. So as you were talking about mental health here tonight, and I was so happy to hear the two young ladies say, you're gonna do something in the evening for parents. Soundtrack, Randy, you're gonna have to think about, how do we have this type of discussion with parents before you try to do anything? Because they won't understand why you're making the changes. If they don't understand the consequence. Of the changing technology, the changing student body path. And what it do to your instructional program? So these hundred and twenty one districts. We've got some districts that are way out there in terms of these changes. We've got others who are just beginning. And what we're attempting to do is with your staff, expose them to these other districts and what they're trying to do and how they have done it. So that they can come back and make some intelligent decisions about what you should do and how fast you should do it. Let me get another one. I think it's called enable, I think I got the right name. There's one of the new applications is you go to apply for a job. Now, we're we're anticipating, I don't know if you know this, we're anticipating a forty percent turnover in school superintendents in this country in the next twelve months. They're resigning all across the country, the job has become in so many communities, so difficult. So this person goes apply for a superintendency, that new app, it's an app. Will do this. It will search everything about that school district, spending any public information piece, it will search every one of you as board members. The app will then look at the candidate. And write a resume specifically for that job. That will target the priorities of that board. And it's a simple app. Give you another one. Want to build a budget? I'll bet you next year you will not build a budget the way you're building it this year. Because of the advancing technology. Because all you got to do is put in your primary considerations, it will build the budget and write the narrative. Write test questions. Talk to the regions, the department staff on this one. Because. You want to write a test question. Supposedly have a high school science course or a high school social studies course or a region. And what you're trying to do is test the student's knowledge of the content. And not the reading ability. It will look at that student's individual lexile level. And will write the same, measure the same content. But personalized to the individual students' lexile and reading level. Fundamental shift. Or finally, I'll give you just one more example. Websites. Web designers. P T D three. Create a website for you like that. You know what spell check you're like? GPT, GPS. Spatial memory, we know. Has been dramatically reduced study after study, we know the spatial navigation. Like I got on the middle of nowhere there. About forty five minutes ago and said, oh, okay. Mental mapping. And so what do you do about it all? I gave you some quick reactions of what we're beginning to see from some of the districts who were in year one with us. Of the the National Commission's work. They said, we gotta change our instructional program. And we can. Right now, we we deal with some everything based upon proficiency. The proficiency model, once they test all the kids. While we know the kids are dramatically different. Having run this like testing program, and I can tell you that the state test, we know, we've known for decades. Does not challenge the top ones or the kids. Because if you challenge the top one third of the kids, two thirds of the kids are going to fail the test. And every school in the state will be on a need improvement list. And the same test is always an incredible challenge for the bottom one third. This enables us to measure growth of a student. Because it can be personalized. But the question is, what? What are the skills the kids need? And we went to McKinsey, how many have ever heard McKinsey? Because they're in the private, they're a huge research group in the private sector. They survey eighteen thousand companies for us nationwide. And we had the big foundation. That would. Helped us find it major studies here. They they surveyed eighteen thousand, eighteen thousand companies in the country, cutting across every major industrial sector. Small, medium and large, to say, what are the skills you need today? And what's your projection by the year twenty twenty five? And first. Physical and manual skills. We worked then with the US Department of Education, US Department of Labor. Put all the jobs into five point times, meaning the lowest twenty percent of paying jobs to the highest twenty percent of paying jobs. For the lowest paying jobs. Today. They spend about fifty percent of their time on this domain of task. That figure drops by twenty twenty five to twenty two percent of their time. Why? It's why I showed you the example of of Google's. Or I'm sorry, Amazon's warehouse, those those jobs are going to be decimated. Basic cognitive skills. That I respectfully submit is the primary instructional program in New York State schools. That's the amount of time I spent. Some people say, well, it's not so important. And I would say to you, we adamantly disagree with that, because you can't do the rest of the stuff on the list if you don't have basic cognitive skills. Basic cognitive skills are essential. Absolutely not adequate. Higher cognitive skills, which I'll define in a moment. Look at these. Yes, skills. S E L skills. Social emotional. Development skills, why so important? The next sentence may be the most important sentence I try to have you remember tonight. Is that GPT three, if you can write an algorithm for the task. The job is gone. Because GPT three has algorithms that write algorithms twenty four seven. And so you have this explosion. In the task that the technology can do, that historically people have used to do. It can't write an algorithm. For social emotional skills. That's why it becomes so important, because an employer is going to only pay you for what the technology can't do faster, more efficiently than you. And then technological skills. You then went back to. This past summer. And said, go back to all those companies, the eighteen thousand companies. And get far more specific about your terms. Define the terms. And we broke into four major categories. Cognitive skills. Interpersonal skills. Digital or technology related skills and self leadership skills. And basic cognitive skills are not here. Randy, you're doing a great job with them. And they are absolutely essential. And they define them. Now, there's a couple of new ones in there because of technology, but in general. We all have a teach day, we know how to assess, familiar with them, they're not controversial. Essential. At the next area, they said essential kids have. These interpersonal skills. I'll get the list. How are you measuring those? How are you reporting those? That's where some of the hundred and twenty one schools. Are working on. And many of them are a year or two years in front of where you will be. And that doesn't mean you got to do what they've done, because none of them have done exactly the same way. But they're great laboratories for you to learn. Next one, self leadership skills. Maybe find one. What instructional practices do you have in place in the district? That requires the kids to develop and exhibit exhibit these attributes? And how are you assessing them? See, our state testing program only does the one on the left, still essential. Why does that become so important? Because we're still under this mindset. That our primary purpose in education is to fair kids for the next grade. The next test. And the next level of education. What percentage of students in the state of New York? Ultimately get a four year degree? And everyone guess? Presently eleven percent. Of all kids, eleven percent of them were for a degree. Or sixty percent of them are then employed. In an area that they had no higher ed training in. Have you done longitudinal study of your own set of kids? Or do we just think, no, no, just wanted to do okay in the next grade and the next test. Go on to college. Everything will be okay. Why aren't they doing well? I look professionally, has more to do with the second and the third column than that's the first column. But I say again, don't go faster than the rate of readiness and trust of your community. And your staff. We conclude we have an instructional design problem. Just a little bit more on home study. Now, what happens when we take basic skills? And interpersonal skills. And a digital communication technology environment. That you don't live, work and interact in. And through those hundred and eighty companies, we identify the skills. But as you look at these. We do not believe they should be new courses. You can over a crowded curriculum. You're not going to get more money to attend this full day in school year, believe me, that's not going to happen. It's a remixing of the batter. And you got to do it in evolutionary way. What happens when you take basic cognitive skills and self leadership skills and bring them together? You have. The higher cognitive skills. And finally. What about when you take interpersonal and self leadership? And bring them together? You have social wellbeing skills, which by the way, the O C M ladies would just talk. Our staffs would never train to do this. Our community expectation. May not be there to think that's the role of the schools. But when we look quantified. Quantitatively. At all the data, it's very clear. That we are not preparing kids for their future. We're preparing them for success of the twenty in the twentieth century's schools. I mean, you're going to have a son or a daughter. Who's a preteen, a teen or an early one. Permit me to tell you what's going to happen to you. I have my children, my kids are older than. Your kids, my kids are more your age, okay? But. Let me tell you what's going to happen, sometime in the next several years. Your son or daughter is going to come home. And standing right next to them is going to be a young man or a young woman, you're beginning to see a lot of and hear a lot about. And at some point in your life, a light bulb's going off to you, you're going to say, holy cats. This should be, could become my son in law or daughter in law. But think about it very deeply, you're going to say, this could become the parent of my grandchild. Look at the list. What's going to be most important to you about that one for showing this? You're going to be happy as long as you think that's a basic skill. If you get a new board member elected, because one of you decide not to run. What do you hope that new board member has? What do you hope if you get a new next door neighbor? And so. But again, you can't go faster than the rate of readiness and trust. You have to deal with all these issues this year. But if that's all you saw. You're going to have a broken system. Because you will not have your heritage for. Or twenty twenty five. You won't have had this school survive for you. And so we think it's going to be an evolutionary process, we don't think you start with all the internal. Data by data, you start with these three basic areas, trying to build up over a three or four year period of time. To an evolutionary way, change the system. And then the being part of learning twenty twenty five, we're going to have lots of information available, creating a staff about learning accelerators, which means. Changing technology, we're going to be showing cutting edge technology instructional practices that they can tie into. How to use community resources, you you have some good community resources here. How to effectively tie them into help, because remember our staff was not trained to do any of this. We think early learning is a huge issue here. This one is not so much an issue in your district, but it isn't some of our district, a more diversified staff is more reflective of student population. We will. June twenty eighth, June thirty, and Randy, you you have some people going, we're going to be showcasing and working with your staff for three days. Just spending three days going in much more depth of what I just did in the last thirty minutes. And then help them put whatever plan they think makes sense together. Come back to all you and say, what do you think? And so that's it. I'll put up my email in case any of you have a, Randy can get me, right, he's, he loves to read it, but everybody wants to email me their, my email. I'll disclose, Mr. Chairman, any questions? Yes, sir.
No, do you think a project based learning model takes into account? All those three skills that you mentioned?
I I think it easily can. And it's. It's an absolute major step in the right direction, and I say if it can, because project based learning is really, really good. If your staff knows how to do it. Right, and but so the answer is yes.
I mean, when you look at what happened in Texas Valley for years they did in existence. Can you comment on tech, the tech valley high school rate, what they've been able to produce?
That's why Gladys was on, the best reason comment I can give you, that's why we picked Gladys to be on the commission. Because you have it right in your own backyard. It's a great program. You know, and and not only Tech Valley, even, you know, the CTE programs, the good ones, there are bad ones and there are good ones in every area. I didn't hit this at all tonight, but we dealt with economists with the Commission to remember, we met every other week, and this was a fairly high-power group. We we brought in some of the best economists and every one of them told us the same thing. It is only a matter of time before we go into recession. Okay, and they were predicting when the interest rates begin to climb. When inflation begins to grow. You'll know that we aren't too far away from a recession, well, everybody, that's what they were telling us eighteen months ago. What are we in the middle of right now? We go into a recession. The the issue of high indebtedness. The college, I think what you're gonna see is what you major in matters. A whole lot, we think there's gonna be that swing. Tech Valley kids got two steps up than everybody else. The other program in this state that's pretty, pretty good is P-Tech, if you've heard of it. Like Fort Montgomery, Bosie's has it, the number one has it, it's incredible program, they take eighth graders who are struggling. Pretty good kids, but just not, you know, quite making it, they put them in this P-Tech program in partnership with a community college for four years. And the day they walk across the state to get their high school diploma, they're handled their associate degree. At the age of eighteen, without a penny of expense to them or their family. It's those type of programs. Any other questions?
So there's a, I understand, it's a hundred and twenty-one of the schools.
Districts.
Districts that are involved, and how did they get? Selected?
They volunteered, but we didn't take all of them that volunteered, okay, and and we looked for a cross-section. Minimum, they had to have a culture where we thought a culture existed in the community that would be supportive at working at change. Not that they were there yet. But we also had about thirty of them that we thought were what we call the pace setters in the country. Because the other ninety-one needed to have some reference point here. We also have big districts like Woodnet County. Okay, three hundred and ten thousand kids in that school district. Union County, North Carolina with forty-four thousand kids. But we also got Wilder Idaho with three hundred and ten kids. You know, so you got a true cross-section of the country.
And you're going to be coaching them all towards this?
Yeah, well, yeah, what we have done is put together, not me personally, okay? We've put together a team of what we call senior consultants. Who are working and helping them in a variety of ways. One of those senior consultants, by way of example, because there's different things you gotta help them with. One is how do you interface with state regulations and requirements? So Mary Ellen Ealing. Is a senior consultant helping with the state interface. Okay, they are people like Gladys, okay, who have been on the cutting edge. We hired fourteen of them right out of the box. To work with the schools. And and then we hired a bunch of other kind of people part-time, based upon a specific area of expertise. I head up a group called the Successful Practices Network. AASA, American Association School Superintendent of. Twelve of the twelve thousand of the fifteen thousand superintendents in the country belong to that group. That group in my organization, I had a something called Successful Practices Network, we're jointly managing it together. I co-chair that group with Dan Dominich, who's the executive director of the ASA.
Are you hoping to have a template for those other? Thousands of districts to follow?
We're hoping to have a process for them to follow. But not, a template would be okay, but not a blueprint. Because we we just feel every community's got their own DNA. And you gotta understand that DNA, and that's what we think school boards become so important. Tom Gensel, who's a media past executive director of National School Boards Association, he's also one of our senior consultants, helping us with school boards. So they, these are people who have pretty deep and rich backgrounds.
For to to, we got their grants, or are you, are you, are you, this is international?
Well, the district paid a pretty modest fee, and and actually, the debate upfront was, do we even charge them? At all, I'll tell you, the conclusion was, I don't know if you even know how we came up with, we said, if they're not willing to put a little bit of money in it. They're not serious. So the AASA staff and my staff have funding from foundations and other places, you know. So Ray McNulty, do you know, right, Randy, Ray's on my staff, he's at, I'm CEO, he's president. He is the the number two person at the Gates Foundation. So. We we, the revenue isn't an issue for us at this point.
Bill, where are SUNY colleges in teaching new teachers? On what you're describing, are they on board with, what are they doing to produce? New teachers that are graduating from their schools? Understanding what you're presenting to us?
In general. Not very far. There are a couple of that, I I'm more in this state, I'm more, I I like the squiggle program, think they're doing pretty well. But in general, I don't think they're that strong. And and I have a master's and a doctorate out of Albany School of Education, so, you know. They did me well, but I'm not sure that they're there, however. Arizona State University. Carol Basile is the dean, has done a fabulous job, we thought the best in the country. We've worked with her and identified eleven teacher education institutions across the country that we think are the best. And we're asking them to take the lead to help us with teacher education nationwide. None of those eleven are in New York State. Okay, a squiggle was considered. But, you know, eleven is a pretty small number nationwide. But Carol Basile, B-A-S-I-L-E, if you Google her, she's a, she's really on the cutting edge on this of Arizona State University. The other question, yes.
So, just trying to think, like, we do a good job of educating the basics, and. Our teachers, I think, are well-prepared to to take on technology. But where do we get that social-emotional piece? Added in, because it doesn't happen in colleges, when when I'm twenty years in classroom, and you know, my colleagues, they can do their teaching job.
Yeah.
And they can learn their technology pieces, but where do you bring in, or how do you bring in? That social-emotional piece and make it stick?
Is a great question, but let me first say, well, I I don't think the universities are doing a great job at it. I do think in general, teachers have a natural aptitude to do that.
And gets all those in place.
But it's all, and it's not focused, okay, but that's a very good thing, okay? If I was talking about, I don't know, are there any accountants in the room before I say the next thing, if I was talking about. A team of accountants, I'm not sure that they would be good at, we think teachers have the potential attributes. So you gotta do two things, number one, you got some some models, what does it really mean? How the heck do I do this? Because it's not gonna be a course. It's an instructional strategy, it's, you know, every day, and then number two, you gotta put in some professional development and training around it.
So I think that's our biggest need, knowing kind of the district, the area, I think that would be our, the crux that we really need to get at.
Yeah, you're gonna be sending a team to Washington. We'll be asking them to, at the end of that three days, try to identify what they think the biggest priorities are. And then we'll try to work with them on an action plan. Around what they think the biggest priorities are. We're not gonna pick out the priorities for the school issue, but once they pick them out. But to help them pick them out, we're gonna show them. With some of the the pace setters, in effect, are doing, and don't make sense, doesn't, can we do it here, good Saki act, and so can't we? So let me close on Randy, to you, your leadership team, congratulations, because you're one of the districts that. Right now, they're gonna be learning from last year's base setters. But you realize, twelve months from now, our goal is to have three to four hundred school districts. From hundred and twenty-one to three to four hundred, you're gonna become pace setters. Our hope is, two, three years from now, we have to set up psych visits to your district. And and by the way, that's gonna be an option for your district this year, also have psych visits, when you see a district, wow, that's what we should do. We'll set up psych visits, so you can go, we want teachers helping the teachers, board members talking to board members. Superintendent is talking to superintendent. With that, I consume too much of your evening, thank you. And by the way, I am gonna leave, because I have a program morning flight to Washington.
So, it's a little bit harder than following her, no disrespect her. This is my. So, we met as a budget committee just a little while ago. We had also fielded a bunch of questions from folks in the last few days. And the, going into our discussion today, we wanted, Randy had spoken about where we, what we align our budget to, when we go about building it. We related that to our twenty thirty destinations in our timeline, which is, I guess, part of some post. Yep, like that, Cole has, that was shared with you guys previously. And then from there, we kind of picked up where we left off the other night, so the other night, we had left off with a proposed two point nine two percent tax levy increase. Below the current four point two one percent max that it could be at. And a proposed budget amount of thirty-four million seven hundred and ten thousand seven hundred and sixty, that's where we left off the other night. Since that meeting, we talked about these four particular pieces. And how we can fit them into the existing budget, or you know, want to, what questions do we have, so on and so forth. Be email, hours on the phone, there were good conversations, public doing, that's great. We talked about primarily the top three here, and leaving the budget committee meeting about. A little while ago now, um, it sounds like we're at a, at a general consensus with those, that we're going to go for and pilot the college credit tuition. We're going to move forward with the Let's Talk app, understanding well that it does report or provide reports to us. So that if moving forward is not utilized, we could consider moving on to another service or whatever. The counselor with the flex program, this was one of the ones that a lot of folks had asked at the last meeting, why is one, why is one of the flex programs in the general form budget, why is the other one? And the grant, and in the end, we decided to leave the counselor in there because of what it does offer to our students for everything that. Gianna and Mason talked about to start off today, to everything that Mr. Daggett just talked about. We genuinely felt that it would, you know, serve our students for more than possibly just less. Then we got down to the art and music piece. And we talked about that, and we do feel that we can make some adjustments with our existing staff. In the existing budget, so we can pretty much, as I was thinking, we can pretty much ignore this last line here, that line was on there for the purposes of the budget committee. So with that, we go back, and we're still right here.
Are you adding our music teacher? But we don't have the implication of the tax levy, or not?
We are not adding it, we're using existing staff to add offerings, is the way I understood our conversation.
Okay, thank you.
We spent, we spent. Both an hour.
The top of the seven, eight, nine hours.
Just the way it was written, I didn't know.
So. Eliminating that last line.
Yes, this this line, this last line, there is no tax caps, implication is we understand it right now. We're gonna try to work with these.
Still stays at two point nine two.
Two point nine two, yep. The only reason I didn't take that out since I presented this. No excuse, that text off, Bill's talking about, we'll take care of it. Yeah, yeah. GPT three point nine five.
If you think that, it will.
No excuse, play like Shane, right? So, those are the topics we discussed, it sounded like we were all in a much better place in understanding what makes out of that. Carrie and I had talked at the end of the last board meeting about possibly, at a future meeting, not tonight. About presenting to all of you guys a more thorough concept of what it takes to start a grant. Get things approved, manipulated, so on and so forth, just walking you through the grant process, Randy brought it up earlier. It's important to know that some brands are long-lasting, like Title One funding, as opposed to the Orange brand. So that is something that Carrie and I are gonna work together and present together to you all to, please help. Anybody have any questions for me? I'm no Mr. Daggett, but. So the recommendation is the thirty-four point seven million dollar budget. Estimated tax on the increase would be two point nine two percent, and that's estimated, generally, our tax rates are well over that, I think we're interested in kind of Athens maybe a little bit different. Fifty voters, or Tuesday event. And that's on the identity page, the exact numbers, because on this, I don't wanna write anything in, just in case we decide to go with. This this line down here, because I don't wanna write anything in on the on the figure packet there, so please pay attention to the identity number.
Is that the only thing where, besides honestly board members that they're voting on, is just this budget?
Yeah.
There's no like.
No, if you wanted. No, we we decided to, for sure, so it's been recognized like a capital outlay project.
Oh, yeah, we talked about that, but nothing like. It's huge, okay.
So after this process, just to give a little insight as to where we're going with this from here, we go and build the tax property tax report card. Send that up at the meeting on the twenty-sixth, we will have the Westar budget on there, as we would do every year. Then if this is adopted today, then I get to work on developing the contingency budget. All right?
I do think those five nights of the people that weren't on the budget committee appreciate the work of the budget committee. And it's been hours, and I'm trying to. Know about all these details, so thank you all for that. And I think it goes to why we wanted a budget committee. Or, you know, like, it was a year or two ago that we thought about it, because we wanted to know. The budget.
And even when we got started, we were like, what are we doing? What is our job, why did we do this? And we're, and we're developing that, you know, being able to thoroughly work through the budget. And realize the need for a workshop that helps us to understand and connect how grant funds are being used and. How that may or may not affect future budgets. how that may or may not affect future budgets.
Okay. Just to acknowledge, obviously, three pieces of correspondence that we all received and we respond or have responded. So for recommend, potential recommendations, personal matters, the motion to approve the one. And two. So any discussion? Business matters, you have nothing more, right? Next, let's do the budget. So if we move on to the budget. That was added, the motion to approve. A recommendation that superintendent so adopt a budget for the twenty-two, twenty, twenty-three school year. The amount of thirty-four million, seven hundred and ten thousand, seven hundred and sixty-eight dollars. Second, any discussion? Call in favor? Opposed? Some carry? Have any good news anybody would like to?
The concerts were great this year. I got to go to them, I brought my daughter. I know I but it was fantastic to see the band up there playing and the corps self-singing and then they did the like select choir and that stuff. So my daughter had a blast and she wants to go back in June. I think that's a great way to get the little kids interested in you know, our music program and see if that's something they wanna do and she was singing along. I keep telling her to cry down a little bit. It was great. And I liked the variety that they did for that concert.
I'm gonna pass tonight. I really liked Bill's presentation. I thought it was really interesting and informative and I got a lot out of it and thanks Ryan for all your work and what are you gonna do next year when the algorithm does everything?
We're gonna beat the system.
Yeah.
Thank the budget committee for putting the extra hours and extra meetings this weekend and getting this handled. I want to say last week, I know it's time for full, but the, my daughter being in kindergarten has fallen in love with being at school and it's really kind of been a pleasure for me to be a part of this board and have her coming home every day and saying how awesome school is and grade and love their teachers and you know, I never wanted to push her to do anything, although I love sports and athletics. She is now coming home like, I wanna play everything because of Coach Caldwell and the athletic staff. So they had their presentation last week and I didn't get to say it then, but I'm especially grateful for that at this point and her, you know, I'll play baseball and basketball and Coach Caldwell says I can play basketball and I'm gonna play so everything. So I'm very pleased that that kind of to hear those coming back and very excited at school.
Like a little mo in the morning.
Yes, everyone.
Yeah, I just want to take the time again to congratulate the student council for stepping up and taking a leadership role on substance abuse and mental health issues. I've been waiting a few years for students to really get involved. It seems like they've really stepped up. And I'm looking forward to the Thursday. April twenty presentation to the community.
I was going to say the same thing. But it's great that they're stepping up and doing that for our whole community, not just the students and not just staff. Also, thank you to the budget committee for answering all my questions and Ryan, you too, that a lot.
The young ladies that spoke, they were amazingly prepared. They spoke well and that's a reflection not only of them, but of the teachers that have been behind them, working with them throughout. They were eloquent and thoughtful and genuinely seemed to care about what was good job.
Yeah, agreed. Think back on that and that there are concerns for keeping it moving forward. I was thinking just like selfishly, you know, we get the eighth graders in there, you know, because that's like another but we can think about that for next year and they did a great job presenting and the social emotional health of students and education is something that I definitely value and I seem to remember that the pre-pandemic, you were having a lot of your guidance counselors come in anyway and doing lessons and so you're kind of on the beginning edge of all of that and so there's work there that you've already been doing that. I feel like, you know, with your morning meeting programs that you would have, all the things that you had before, we couldn't sit together and do things and I don't know, I'm so happy that that's going to be a focus because I really feel like that's important. Great job.
I just want to thank the budget committee too for asking all the good questions and stuff like that and don't hesitate to ask more. So, but no, that's what we're trying to do, just ask questions and we will give you the answer, the information, whatever. All you want to do. And yes, John Mason did a wonderful job, he's three good kids. You know, for that, I think we're getting there. I think our kids are realizing. You know, a math grade is good, but it's just important to make sure that my buddy, you know, in the other row of the classroom is healthy, you know, as well. You know, mentally and physically and the wellness is just as important for the whole child. You know, and I think we're making some great steps as a district in that, in that area. Where people are saying, yeah, this is important. And the silver lining of COVID, it certainly highlighted that. And so we did so many great things during COVID and some things we've forgotten about. And I go, why don't we pick those back up, you know? And I'll say here publicly, and I'm gonna try to figure out with principals and everybody in our staff. Remember when we were totally kind of shut down, those couple months in spring of twenty twenty? We had all our paraprofessionals and then folks were getting a hold of every kid at least once a week, you know? So why can't we do that now when they're all here? You know, so how do we make that happen? You know, in the sense of, and I know our agency systems would like eat that up. They'd love to do that. So that's just something, you know, we do, I know we have parents who are so appreciative of kids, whereas how do we keep thinking about one of those silver lines from the whole COVID pandemic and do what we want to continue to do. I just found out on personal note, you know, my youngest is gonna be a rolling in the Fall Shumon University of Rhode Island. All right, and again, thanks to teachers, because you know, Dad parts had to ask one of the deans of the, she's going into the health sciences field. You know, she's, I got about twenty-four college credits when she graduates, you know, from SUNY schools, we will accept them all. You know, a head start, if you will. I know a lot of her classmates are in St. Paul in Manicore, so that's a benefit for all our kids. Kudos to our staff for stepping up and off. Or any classes we have in college, twenty-eight, something like that.
To get back to what people were saying about the two young people that were here. It affirms why we're all here. And why we spend all these hours doing this to see two young people come and talk as they did and I think part two to, that hopefully they have that carryover that I think we'll look for after them, because if they can do that, that's something that's terrific. But and the fact that they, however, they did it, but they saw a critical situation even in New York State, because for years I dealt with this, that there was either mental health or there was substance abuse and they didn't, the systems didn't talk to each other. And there wasn't any, and kids could go on either track and sometimes they fall between the two tracks. And they said, you can't deal with the mental health until you deal with the substance abuse, so we're not gonna deal with it. So the fact that they saw. And hopefully maybe they can work and change that and they move on to their own areas. I think it's terrific. So very nice work on those. And I think they're emblematic of what you see every day and certainly when kids do come here to present. I'm always amazed at their poise and that. What they know and how they express themselves and how selfish that they are, because that was not me in ten to eleven. And so I, that's very, good job on that. That's where you see the real, the benefit and the the outcome of what you do with the staff and yet Carrie, what you all do when we see kids come and talk to us like that, so. Thank you. All right, so for future meetings, we have most of the regular meeting on Tuesday, April twenty-sixth. Six thirty, then Edward J. Arthur. Tuesday, the seventeenth, from one to nine. Next regular meeting on Thursday, May nineteenth, at six thirty, right here. Okay, so just the negotiating committee is having a meeting now, so just a motion to adjourn. Any discussion? On the favor? Thanks, everybody.